Well, welcome. Tonight, we have an interesting show. We're gonna meet a person, I can't call him a candidate. I guess he is technically a candidate for school committee, but since nobody's running against him, we are gonna meet the next member of the school committee. Why don't we start with an introduction?
Wow, yeah, I'm Derek, Derek Sobers. Milford resident here for, geez, my son just turned twenty yesterday. So, I've been here, you know, I've been here for fifteen going on sixteen years. I have, outside of my oldest, I have my twelve-year-old daughter and, and my eight-year-old son.
Max.
Max, you got it. You know him. Yeah, we, we've laid down our roots here. I ran for a school committee three years ago, and I'm back. Wanted to represent not only my kids, but this community and everybody that is involved in the school system.
Well, I always tip my hat to people like you, who not only have suggestions and complaints, but are willing to say, "Coach, put me in. I can make a difference." Cause you know, being involved with town government and different departments, everybody knows how to make it better. And then you say, "Well, why don't you join?" Well, no, I don't have time.
Right.
So, the fact that, first of all, you chose Milford.
Yeah.
You know, because we always joke about what's a true Milfordian? And it's always been the joke of third generation and you gotta live within two miles of your mother. But I was born here. I didn't have a choice. I didn't choose Milford. I really appreciate people like you that had a choice to be anywhere.
Right.
And you picked Milford as a place to set your roots for your family.
Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't hard. It was not a difficult decision.
And bringing Max along made it easy, cause he really helped on the soccer fields this fall.
Yeah, we can't wait for Spring Bowl. This is gonna be, this is gonna be great. He's, he's, he's playing FIFA and he's playing his NBA two K and, and both on the court and on the soccer field. He, he's a little man out there.
Well, your daughter was pretty good too.
Yeah, yeah, he's trying to, he's trying to emulate her. That's why, that's why Max, Max gets his drive. He's trying to keep up with her.
I hope that works. My, my youngest was not the athlete my oldest was.
Okay.
So she would study. She was so methodical. She would study the way Alexis would line up, and Lexi believed in hip checking. So if, especially when we put her in a boys league, when the boys would come down, she'd take them over the hip and splatter them.
Oh, yeah.
Emily would study the move. Only Emily was half her size. So all of a sudden, the opponent would run through her and you could see Emily looking up saying, "But I did it right. You're supposed to be laying here."
I tell Aria, uh, cause the boys will always, they'll always, you know, say, "Oh, she's, she's just a girl," whatever. And I'm like, "Ari, you make sure that they remember your name by the end of this match." And she does, cause then they're all like, "Wow, Ari, you're so great. Ari, Ari, Ari." I'm like, "You got, you got all those boys on your side now."
We played a team once that, I walked into the bubble back then, John Smith. And parents came running up to me saying, "There's a coach here making a complaint against you." We had never played the town, so I said, "I wonder what I'm being complained about."
Right.
And as I walked in, he was with John Smith, and I heard John say, "Al's girls will give you a good game. Don't worry." Right then and there, I knew what this was about. And the coach looked at me and said, "Look, we've beaten every team here, but candidly, we came here to play soccer, not to play with girls."
Yeah, yeah.
I looked at him and I said, "Well, sir, you can take the forfeit, but you've driven an hour to get here. Me and my little girls, we'll try and give you a game."
We'll try.
And I remember I walked up to the girls and said, "I haven't asked you for this. I want this game. I want them to remember this game." The end of the game, we beat them two to one, just barely. As he shook my hand, he says, "I guess you called it." I said, "I told you we'd try."
Yeah, yeah, there you go. Sweet, right?
That was better than any playoff game, any.
Yeah, there are those games where you're like, "Oh, this was so sweet."
Well, it's something the girls would remember forever.
Exactly. Yeah, it's not about, it's really not about us, the dads. Like, it's about the kids feeling that empowerment, like, "Oh, I can do this. Oh, actually, I am a lot better than anybody gives me credit for."
Yes.
You know? So I'm glad that, that the girl, these, these young ladies have got that message. And you can see it throughout all of sports right now, the domination of, of the women athletes.
Of course, we played winter in the bubble in the boys league. It was when the girls turned fifteen, and I decided I should know their boyfriends, cause they were all athletes. So we split the team in half, half boys, half girls, and put them in a boys league. It was the best thing I ever did, cause then I got control over the boys.
Right, right. I don't wanna think about these, those days. I'm not, not, not ready for that. I'm not ready for that.
You're never gonna be ready when they come over and say, "Hi, Mr. Sobers. I'm here for Aria." It's like, okay, do I swat them now or later?
I know she's gonna watch this too. Like, like, three years ago, she was like only nine, right?
It didn't matter.
She didn't, she wasn't watching this. Now, now she's got a phone, so she's like, "I'm gonna, I'll, I'll watch my dad." And so, so, I'm not gonna say anything. Love you, babe.
But it was the best thing I ever did, cause I got four nights a week with them, got to know all their friends.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Why Milford?
Why Milford? I mean, gosh, I feel like, uh...
Well, you could've picked anywhere.
I could've picked anywhere, uh, a few times. Uh, I've, when I first moved to Milford, I was on South Bow Street. And then I moved to Forest Street. Now I've moved to Haven Street. I could've moved anywhere. You know, I have a business in Hopkinton. I have, uh, my other, uh, uh, business that I work for, as the billing director, is centered in Providence and several locations. Like, I could, I could easily be still in Millville, uh, close to my, my parents are. I could live in Barbados where my family is, right? I could be down in Georgia with my sister. Uh, I like Milford because Milford is not too big, but it's not so small. It's diverse, and you can, you can have, it's a lot of opportunity. Plus, I like, you know, Basic Batch, and, and I like, it's got some good coffee here, some pizza. So, yeah, no, no, honestly, it's just, the people are great. The, the community seems like it's always working in the right direction. And, and it's just, why, why would I not want my kids to be here and, and grow up in, in, in this style of community?
Well, I think that's the key when you start looking, by the time you get to make the decision, your life's already set.
Right.
But the biggest decision is, like I mentioned before, I loved living in Washington. It was a great life, living four days a week on a boat at the Maryland Yacht Club, living three days a week on the house. We enjoyed Paris, cause we were running around the world three weeks out of four. But when it came down to where do I want my child's roots to be?
Right.
That gravitational pull brought me right back to Milford. And I've heard a lot of stories from different people as to why they chose Milford, but it's always fascinating to say, "You were ten miles away in Millville, so it's not too far," but...
Right, right, right. But it's, it's different. And just the other day, my daughter said to me, she's like, "I like wearing my scarlet red. I want to be in Milford." You know, she's twelve, so, you know, things can change, but at this moment, she's saying, "I, I'm a Milfordian. I'm, I, I want to be here." Like, I wanna, I want my own family here. So, that's amazing that she can, she can see that this is, this is a, a great community and with a lot of value, a lot to offer.
Well, I remember the scariest part was that you've got a few years before they start looking at college. And the best advice I got was, "Don't fight any early choices." Cause Lexi immediately said, "Maybe I'll consider College of Pluto or the University of Mars. How far can I get away?"
Right.
And we, she knew what I thought, but the concentric circles kept getting smaller and smaller. And at the end of the day, she made her choice of Worcester.
Right. Well, I did, like I said, I have my twenty-year-old, so I did go through that.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so we, uh, my, my wife took him down to Full Sail down in Florida. I, I brought him down to Georgia State University in, in, in Georgia, in Atlanta. We looked at all types of different places. He ended up going to UMass Dartmouth, you know? So, ends up, and you end up just going where you're comfortable, where you, where you know, you feel good at, and that's...
Then you've gone through how nice it is to have them that close that you can just pop over.
Yes, yes.
Or have, get the phone call, "We're all stressed out over midterms. Can we come home for dinner?" And it's like a goddamn clown car when the car shows up.
I know.
All these bodies. I looked at the chair and I said, "This can't be safe." She says, "Leave it alone."
It's, my son has taken a little break from, from, uh, UMass, and so he's actually, you'll find him at Trader Joe's in Milford. You know, so he, he's around. He's around. Yeah, that clown car shows up every once in a while, you know? It's nice.
Fundamental questions that people ask coming to Milford. Will my child get a good education in Milford?
Absolutely, absolutely. I have friends who have graduated here and they, they, they went to very nice colleges. And, and I can see that from my own kids, and, and that's going, that, there's no reason why that can't happen. Again, it's all about opportunity, and their opportunities are here. So, yes, absolutely. Whether it be college or, or a trade, like, you can, you can make whatever it is you want out of it. And that's, what else can you ask for?
We're gonna talk, I'm gonna ask you questions about the new high school, but one of the questions that's being considered is, should we have a full school? One that, when I grew up here in Milford, if you were gonna go to college, you went to Milford High. If you wanted to go to the trades, you went to BVT. But that's not the same anymore. You know, cause I've brought it up a, a number of times, where my father came to Milford in forty-one. If you put him in a chemistry class, he would not do well.
Right.
But give the man a tool.
Right.
He was an artist. And to get into BVT, you have to be in the top sliver of your academic class.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, what happens to the kids who are smart and talented, but with their hands, not academically? So adding some vocational learning to the new high school is something being considered. What do you think of that?
Absolutely. As whatever, as someone who went to a trade school and went to college, I like, I like choices. I like opportunity. And so whatever we can offer, that, I'm pretty sure I can't interfere with what BVT already offers, right? Is that, I believe that's the case?
Well, there's an exception now.
Okay.
It used to be that you could not compete with your own VOTech.
Okay.
So thirteen towns, all are part of the BVT network. If we wanted to have carpentry, we couldn't, because BVT had carpentry. We wanna have plumbing. But now, uh, the government is starting to understand that we can't get all our kids into BVT.
Right.
Cause they can't all be the top ten percent or fifteen percent of the academic class.
Right.
So if we have the programs added, the Chapter Seventy-four programs, which are the VOTech programs, to Milford High, because BVT can't take all of our kids, we can get an exemption.
Right.
So we can have programs in our schools for the mere fact that, okay, we want to send twenty kids to a VOTech. Only ten of them qualify as the top ten percent. Those other ten kids are, in my opinion, being denied the opportunity.
Opportunity matters.
So now the question is, it's gonna cost money.
Yeah.
Should we do it?
So, it's a great question. I think about my wife on this. Like, I'm not, I'm not a technician, mechanic anymore. My wife is a, she would've said before, she's a hairstylist. Now she'll say she's a business owner, right? She has her whole team. She has, she owns a spa. Uh, we rent out, uh, for other, uh, other holistic, um, uh, businesses inside of our, inside of our, our, our building. And we will always be looking for, uh, uh, new students, you're right? So a cosmetology program in Milford would be great, you know? And it's not like, it's not like the money's leaving the area. We have, we're set up right there in Hopkinton. There's plenty of salons here in Milford that could use young, new, uh, 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 people who have, who have graduated and have that, that experience. You know, that's, to me, it's, it's just a net positive to be able to offer more for trade. Because it's, again, my wife has gone from being a sty, being a stylist, brand new, to owning a, and, and running a, a company that is doing very well. We've, uh, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, we were named the, the Best Salon West of Boston by Boston Magazine. That doesn't just happen. Like, that took a lot of work, a lot of effort. She went to, she did a business course. She's done... Why would we limit people if we have an opportunity? I understand that it costs money. But what you can actually get out of it is, is priceless and, and it's valuable, and actually, we'll, you'll get paid back. You know? If you, this is a, this is a, a town that is, I wanna say booming, but it is attractive for a lot of people. So the industry is, is gonna be here, you know? And I think this is the place.
Well, I think too, in the early days, people wanted to be physicians, lawyers, because it gave you money, gave you prestige.
Right.
A lot of tradesmen earn very good salaries.
Yes.
And like your wife, take and leverage their experience into owning businesses that a lot of people would aspire to be them.
Right, right.
So, you know, I like the idea of expanding into Chapter Seventy-four programs, because it's just gonna take care of the kids who didn't quite make the top ten, but are very good at what they do.
And that's not the end of their story. They can continue to grow. I know myself, I was way too immature back in, back in high school, right? It took me a while to really get settled and figure out what it is that I want, and, and, and that, that doesn't change. What, again, I was more blue collar, and now I'm not like, I'm behind a computer a lot these days. It's very odd. I used to make fun of people like me. But it, but having, but knowing that there's that growth, right?
Yeah, the term geek now has a different kind of taste.
Yes, yes. But you can, you can go back and forth. Why can't you? You know? You can get in where you fit in, and if that, if that just takes time, um, and, and curiosity to find that, then, you know, we should, you should be able to have that here in Milford, you know?
What do you think of the new, the program for the new high school? Have you had a chance to look at it yet?
The program as...
Building a new, well, not a new, but...
Yeah, uh, yeah, I think we haven't really settled on that, right? As far as...
You know, it, it, it kinda makes me laugh, because we haven't settled on it. Option of building a new high school. Let's see, where could we build it? The only dirt we own that's big enough is Asylum Street. Can you imagine the traffic on that superhighway Route one forty, leading to Asylum Street if there was a high school there?
Right.
Can you imagine the life of the people on the university streets with all those high school seniors driving through the...
Yeah, yeah.
Candidly, I don't, the feasibility study, you're absolutely right, will tell us whether we'll spend even more money on a new school.
Right.
But I don't know where else you could put it.
I remember when, when my son, my oldest, was, uh, going into Woodland, they were, that was when they were looking at replacing Woodland. And, and now my youngest is at Woodland right now, at the new Woodland School. My, my daughter, I think, was probably the first or second year, uh, when that school was opened. And so where the soccer field is at Woodland, it's where the old building was, right? So, is it possible, and what, how, I don't know how the staging, again, it's not me. I'm not the builder. I don't know how this works. But can you, can you make another building? Oh, hit the mic again. Hit, uh, put another building on the property, or, or, I don't know, but this is what that...
That's what the feasibility study would tell us.
Exactly.
Is they'll look at, can we rip up the football soccer fields we built and put a new school and angle it, and not run afoul of the wetlands in the middle?
Yeah, yeah, that too, right. Yep, yep. There's a lot to consider. Definitely, definitely.
But the fundamental question's coming up is, we have a nine through twelve. Eight through twelve, seven through twelve. I think people are leaning towards either a seven through twelve or an eight through twelve. Any thoughts?
Um, my thought is usually with the students, and when I was in school, uh, my, my high school was seven through twelve.
Yeah, you went to a seven through twelve.
Yeah, and I, and I just think about it as, they try to keep the highest, the, the senior, seniors and juniors, like, separate from the seventh and eighth. But man, it's just, I was, I was already a small guy, so I was really small in seventh grade, and I was like, wow, these are, these are, these are really adults. They've got a full beard over there. Like, it was, like, so as far as that, I'm like, eh. It worked, got through it. They've been, I, I believe they've changed it a little bit over there. I think they have the Hartnett School, where it's the seventh and eighth grade now. Um, but if it's, if that can work, it can work. But seventh and eighth grade is, was, was always a very tough time. But for the, for the kids itself, but as far as the, the money aspect, and that again is something that, I have to see the studies and, and the feasibility of what, what that would look like for the shape of a school.
Well, the money's scary.
Yeah.
At least to an old fellow like me, because when you talk about, um, VOTech and Franklin being built for a mere two hundred eighty million dollars, or Haverhill for their VOTech wanting four hundred fifty million dollars.
Right.
If, it's gonna be three hundred plus million dollars to build a new high school.
Yeah.
I don't, do you think people understand three hundred million?
How much money that is? I don't believe, no, I don't. I don't believe that people have a real good concept of how much money any of it is. Like, like, it's, it's more money than we got, right? It's more money than each, um, individual here has, so, uh, it, but at the same time, I know it's gotta be done. It's not, it's not like it's, not like you just push it under the rug and say, "We'll come back to it later." This is something that we're gonna have to tackle.
Well, I think realistically, we'll go back to the town meeting. I've never seen town meeting not support our kids.
Right, right.
You know, they're all, they're all parents or have family that's gone through the system. It's just gonna be hard. I think when people start realizing that you're talking, the average bill in Milford for real estate is sixty-five hundred a year. You start asking somebody to pile on another fifteen hundred to two thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, those are hard conversations to have. And I, from, I was, I was watching the, the, the building committee, uh, school committee, um, meeting about a month ago, and I, I was hearing, uh, the superintendent talk about, I think we have forty-five hundred and twelve students right now. And it goes up and down a little bit, but it's generally going up, whereas other towns are starting to shrink a little bit in their size. Uh, I think that's more telling of how this town is with, with their, the kids, like, this, this...
Well, ninety-five percent of the schools are going down in their population.
Yeah.
Milford is one of the, whatever it is, fifteen school districts.
It's a draw.
That go up, cause I used to kid the school committee when they came to us with budgets, and they needed more space, more, they said, "Come on, guys. We average one net child per year." Cause I graduated first year out of Milford High, seventy-four, it was two hundred twenty kids.
Right.
Forty years later, it was two hundred sixty.
Right.
So we're adding one child per year.
Right.
Now granted, the programs changed and you needed more space, but it was one kid per year. Then all of a sudden, with this immigration, we started adding two hundred a year.
Right.
That's the size of Memorial School.
Yes, yes, it is. Uh, when I, when I ran three years ago, and I was knocking on doors, I met a lot of families that said, "We're new here. We came here. We are living, we're living in Greater Boston, in Boston, and we moved out here. We picked this town because of the diversity. We came here because they have all these programs, because they, uh, we do such a great job of our special education program." And to me, I don't wanna let those families down. They came here. We need to honor them. Like, we need to nurture them. We need to make sure that we're giving, giving them the best that we can. So this, there are going to be hard conversations when it comes to, you know, the increase of taxes and, and, and whatnot, but we have to, we, we, we owe it to these families who are also paying taxes, and they came here for that reason, for their kids to get a good education.
Somebody was to ask you, diversity.
Yes.
Good thing or challenge?
Not a hundred percent a good thing.
Why?
The, the, the culture, the, the, the influx, the, the, oh my gosh. The, this is a, this planet is already, we're, like, you know, like, in this, in this world, we're already, remember it was like, was it three, six degrees of separation? It was like two degrees of separation. We're working, we're working with people in other countries every single day, and we need to be able to relate to people. And this is, this is the communication age. It might be also the miscommunication age, this, this information age, but it's an information age, and we are sharing it, and we need to be able to work with others. Um, diversity only helps that. Uh, I don't, I don't want, I don't want a homogeneous society. I don't. I believe that we should be not, uh, uh, not, not even a salad bowl, but yes, be a melting pot, where, where we can, where we can exchange ideas and, and background. Like, I was in Barbados a month ago, and some of those things that my cousins were, were, were sharing with me that I didn't know about how, how certain, um, uh, uh, certain customs and why, why it is. I'm like, oh, I can incorporate that. You know, like, I, like, there's, there's a lot to learn from, from everybody's background. So, yeah, I'm very, I get, I get excited about that, cause to me, that's, I don't, I don't see how that could possibly be a negative. It's, it's, you can say, you can say, "Well, now we gotta, we gotta, uh, diversify how we teach. We gotta diversify how..." Yes, we do. We do. We should be, we should be happy to do it, because everybody needs to, to, to get in and fit in and be able to relate to each other, because you're gonna be, you're gonna get left behind if you don't.
I think that's the key, is welcome to the real world.
That's it. Can't hide from it. It's here.
You know, and when you look, and traditionally, American society have been the biggest thieves in the world. We steal the best of every culture.
Yes, yes.
You know, you think about foreign students come here, and twenty-five percent of them stay.
Yeah.
And they teach us the good things of their culture.
Right.
They teach us some of the bad things, like everybody else, but you can ignore those. But you start thinking about it, if I'm gonna succeed, I mean, I spent years running around the world. If you couldn't assimilate to your customers, if you couldn't make them feel like you understood them, you weren't getting anywhere.
Yeah, yeah. I can think of things in the workplace. People talk about Kaizen. That's not a US thing. You know, like, a lot of the, a lot of the policies and the, the systems, the procedures that we adopted are coming from outside of this country. Like, we have to utilize these things. We have to learn from it.
We're the biggest thieves in the world. We see a good idea, we take it and use it. And to me, that's a good thing.
Right. Every week, people are driving down to Ikea, like...
A good American company.
Like I said, like I said, you can't hide from it. It's here. You got it. We have to embrace it.
What do you say to parents who bring up the fact that they're worried that children coming into the country who don't speak English will hold back the education for the kids who are American?
Um, I find that to be a little bit selfish, honestly. I do. And I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any reservations on saying that. It's, it, people who are coming here to this country are coming here for multiple, multitude of reasons, but, um, they're not, like you're saying, uh, Americans steal. They're not stealing. They're here, they're here to enrich. They're not stealing, they're here, they're here to enrich and they might be lea- uh leaving their own country for um, out of, out of necessity. And they believe in that American dream and so to even entertain the conversation of. Is my kid going to be negatively affected by a not, like, no, we gotta have more compassion and humanity here, period. Like I'm, I'm, I get, I get a little, a little, a little frustrated with with um. This the selfishness that people have, because like we said in the, when your first question, can you, can my child get a good education here? Yes, yes. Focus on, focus on that, your kid can get a good education here. It's the, another child coming here is having a difficult time already, right? They're they're, they might not know the language. And yet they're still supposed to pass tests, you don't have to do them cast anymore, but you still have, it's still hard to. To 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 afford them, but that doesn't necessarily affect you, doesn't affect your child really, like you're, there's so many different classes. I don't, I don't, it's hard, I I feel like I'm even getting into that conversation, just it's like, don't worry about this, there's a lot of other uh um. Uh variables as to why uh you might have have those those thoughts. But it doesn't have to be on the, because of the 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 foreigner that's coming in.
And I think that's the key is that people don't know. But if they're worried, it's your child. Is there anything you wouldn't do for Mighty Max? If you think there's a danger that he'll be held back, you wanna at least ask the question.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. Yeah, I. So, see now you got me back a little bit, cause I'm, I'm, I was, like, say I'm frustrated. And I don't, but I don't wanna say I don't hear people's concerns, I don't wanna come across like that, it's true. But I don't, I think there's other, there's other things we can point to, not, not the, not somebody else.
Well, I'll, since you're gonna be part of the school committee, my opinion is that. You have a jaundiced view on the education in Milford, you better have, you better be a proponent and be proud of it. But the real judge to me is the universities around us. If Milford wasn't giving a good education, we would have our students apply to. Piccadilly Junior College and that would be it. When I see, and again, I'll take it personally because my daughter, my oldest daughter applied to a number of schools, got into every one. That to me is a reflection on what the universities think of Milford education.
You see it every year right around graduation time, you see where the kids are going, they're going to real big name schools all over the place. Like, we're blessed, I don't think we, not we, I think there are some people who don't realize. How good Milford has it right now. It's if you, if you, if you don't look back, you can't, you you may not be, you might. If you're always looking back, you might not be looking forward, because if you're looking forward, you're actually seeing that there's, there's some real good fruits of our labor. That are that were, that are showing up at graduation time.
Well, when we were seniors, we ran out of science courses at Milford High, had taken them all. Principal who, God bless Uncle Paul Raftery, for how much he cared about the kids. He called three of us in one day and said, I got a problem with you three. Did really, he says, yeah, we don't have more science classes for you, so I signed you up at Dean Junior, which is now Suffolk. You're gonna take chemistry and biology there during the week. Which was fantastic, but. We had to drive to Franklin, and of course, the first problem was none of us had a car. But the fact that to get that next level. I had to go to Franklin. To a college. Today, I see the advanced placement courses. They can do them online. So.
Brave new world.
Brave new world. Parents also asked a question, you read all about problems in the high schools. But even in the elementary schools, bullying and just danger, is Milford's system safe?
Yes, um, I understand that this is, that's a layered uh question. There's a, there's always the question of, what, what are we talking about with safety? You say bu- bullying, okay, yes, we, I believe we're safe, I believe that we have systems in place, I would defer to. Uh, the SRO officers and the the police, the and 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 for anything that was really that serious that involves them. Uh, but then you talk to your superintendent, you talk to your principals, you see, you see that things are being handled over there and if. If it's not, then I'm, I'm not aware, but that's something that I'd be seeing.
Well, you've had three kids go through the system.
Haven't had an issue. But I mean, that's one of my experience, right?
Few years ago, we made a decision to add. We call it a SWAT team, but it, it was four officers dedicated. Or at least focusing on school safety. Uh, back then it was six hundred thousand dollars, so it was a huge investment for us. And people have questioned whether it was worth it, cause nothing's happened. What would you say to that?
I, what I would say to that is that nothing happened.
It's a success.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because when um they made the presentation. The thing that hit me the hardest was with all these school shootings and all. We participate in a regional SWAT program that could have a SWAT team to Milford High. Or to any Milford school, they're all less than a mile apart. Within forty minutes of being called. And we asked a dumb question saying, how long is a typical incident? They said eighteen minutes. So wait a minute, let me understand, we're participating in a SWAT program that will show up twenty minutes after the disaster's over. That swayed my vote immediately. And I hope that provoking that whole crowd that participate day to day in the school, never use the SWAT officers.
Yeah, I agree with that, I agree with that, I, I, we've, again, we've been very fortunate. And if there were um situations that were stopped beforehand. Then yes, we gotta be thankful for the fact that we have, we have uh tho- those officers in in there to prevent things from happening. But um and be a deterrent, right? And yeah, that was a, I forget how long ago that was when they, when you did, when the, that was uh uh created. And how long it lasted for, but um, it's feel like, is that over? No?
It's now just such an integral part.
Okay.
The officers that are at the school are unique. I see the respect, they don't come in as um hard-nosed. You know. Overly powerful, they come in as normal people. And I think that helps a lot, because some of the new students are coming from countries where the police weren't so. Pleasant. You know, when I ask my daughters, how do you get along with officers so and so, oh, he's always there, he's cool. What more would I want? I want the kids to feel comfortable.
Yeah, I agree.
If you had the magic wand and you could make a couple changes in the system, can you think of anything that you'd do?
Couple changes in the system.
Well, one of them, we talked about adding Votek.
That would, that would be a huge one.
Anything fundamental you would change or move around?
That's a good question. I suppose like I I don't, I don't, I don't wanna just have an opinion, right? I feel like I I I speaking for myself. Wouldn't be, wouldn't be appropriate, because I think everyone has their own, has their own ideas. And and I I wouldn't wanna put mine ahead of somebody else's, but I definitely would like to take in a community opinion on that and then. Work from there. I don't have a specific thing that I would um uh say, this has to be changed, this has to be done. But Votek, Voke- uh Votek would be, would definitely be number one, adding that in, I think that's a great feature, cause like I said, this. It's near and dear to my heart, um, but I can't think of a second, a second one.
Well, when we look at the school system itself. How do you feel overall about the quality of education that's given and the teachers?
Fairly positive, um, I know when, when I talk to my, my daughter. She'll say, you know, sometimes the gym is really hot, the rest of the school's really cold. And you're, you know, working on like, there's certain things that are happening inside the school, you know, um, which I think is. Typical of a school, you know, it's, it's, a lot of, a lot of kids in there, a lot of things happen, a lot of, it's, it's a big facility, um. But uh for teachers and and the staff, uh it. I I don't have enough information to be able to say one way or the other, like, it feel like, I I personally feel like it's good. Uh, and, but I ca- I can't, I really can't answer that question, that's a tough, that's a tough question now.
They're not supposed to be easy.
Okay, geez, you're really throwing some hardballs at me now.
I faced an issue when my daughter for preschool was in Holliston. And I came to Milford and Jose Viera was principal of Brookside. And I asked him, I said, if I bring my daughter to Milford. Which in my heart, I wanted her here anyway. But again, this is my life, there's nothing more important to me than making sure she's. Not that she needs it, but that she's protected and, I said, what can I do? To make sure she gets the best education possible? How would you answer that?
You say involved, you gotta, yeah, you know, and I I think they, you know, I didn't even bring this up, but like. On my phone, I get messages daily from teachers and and the administration, letting us know. What's going on and and here's what happened in class today and here's a picture of Max drew drew, you drew that, like. That, I'm, I'm connected that way, I I see the homework when it comes home, I see there's been graded, I can see that he's excited to show me that way he, what he's done and. And Ari is the same way, like, they, the the communication is key, right? And you wanna, you wanna feel like at any point you're in that classroom, without having to actually physically be there. And so that to me is, is, has been awesome, um, with that, that little app that they have, you know, talking points and everything like that, so. You can, you can stay connected without really having to do too much, um, and then if you're, if, if that's not enough. If your child is struggling, you can jump on uh and and on there and talk to a teacher, it's not, it's not hard, it's, they're, they're, they are available. They make themselves available, um, so I feel like I might have been, I might be taking that for granted, you know? You know, it's just, well, that's just how it is now, that wasn't how it was when I was growing up, you know, you had to get to your, get to the school. You know, you ha- you might get a letter sent home, but now it's. On your phone, and it's right there, and you're, you're, you're right there with your kid.
That's funny, cause that was the answer he gave me.
Really?
Yeah, Jose said, you want your kid to get the best education possible, be involved.
Yeah, yeah.
Any way you can, be involved, cause it was hard. And I'll ask you a question, do you have any idea how to get more parents involved in the school? Cause I remember, I mean, I could not have asked for anything more from my mom and dad. They're just outstanding parents, but he had no idea what school was. He came from Portugal where he got his four years in the village school. And that was it. But the minute somebody would say, you need to go to this school. All the schools that I went to are closed now, but um, you need to be at the Spruce Street School Thursday night. Why? To support your son. Poor guy, he had no idea what was going on, he put on his suit, put on his hat, went down and sat in the audience. Had no clue as to what was going on, but he somehow was told. You have to be there, you and your wife, to support your son. And nothing was gonna get in the way. And it was amazing what an effect it had, cause I knew they didn't understand the language. I knew they didn't understand when they were going through the core curricula and the, but they were there. How do we get more parents? Do you have any ideas?
Let's see, with, going back a few of your questions, yeah, that, that, me not having an answer on that one, that was. Thinking about it, that would have been where I would have went is getting more parents involved, even though you have the the talking points and. And and everything, I do feel like there, um, especially our. Immigrant community, I don't know, I don't want there to be a disconnect, right? I believe that everybody should be involved in these things, it's like you're saying about your dad and, and so. When I go to different events and it's not, I guess, this is more community, not just school, when I think of like. My daughter's soccer team, you know, it's fairly homogenous and I just have a feeling that there's a lot more kids that could be playing. You know, um, and how do we, how do we do outreach for that? Uh, I was a part of a co- a committee. Uh, at the school, I was the only parent, it was all administrators and teachers, uh, it wasn't just in Milford either, it was from surrounding towns, uh. And there was the uh Culture Responsive Teaching and we were on year two and they, they just, the state ended that program. But part of our, our goal was to bring more community invol- involvement. By by getting to the people where they are at, which is, you know, at home and 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 drawing people out to. To really uh 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 flourish and and pollinate around everybody else, you know? So I, I, that would, that would be, that's, that's, that's gotta be a goal for any. Uh, school committee member is, how do we get more people involved, you know, like, you know, just by being, just by being in that position, you're, you're more like a. A leader, right? So how, how do you be that face and draw people out to not only support their own kids? But support the community as a, as a, as a, as a whole.
Well, I think the schools have evolved so far, when I grew up in Milford, back in the days you walked uphill both ways. You had English, Portuguese. And English and Portuguese. You know, you may have a sprinkling of a couple different languages. Today, I was amazed when I found out that there's dozens of languages. Spoken in Milford. And the fact that we can reach out to most of those families. Actually made me feel pretty proud.
Awesome, right? Yeah, you should feel proud, that's, that's amazing. That's not easy and that's, but that is also part of, part of our duty, you know, is to make sure people. Can uh are uh uh complimented for what they bring, which are all gifts. Like my daughter right now, she just, she was taking Spanish, now she's, now she's taking some French, you know, like. Like, that's cool, like, I love that, she's like. Yeah, but you got all the, you have all the options, so I love it, like.
I remember when I moved back to Milford and Lexi went to Stacy, I ran into. An old teacher of mine, French teacher. And I was amazed when she came up and said, hmm, I have a question for you. And I said, okay, Miss Long, wh- what's the question? Has nothing to do with your daughter, do you remember the last thing you said to me when you left Stacy? And I said, thirty years ago, no, it was twenty some years ago, no. She goes, you asked me, why am I bothering to learn French? I'll never use it. Where did you move back from? I said, Paris. Now, first of all, it stunned me that Amy Long would remember. That I existed or said something. But then it dawned on me how short sighted I was saying, I'll never use French. And there I am, living in Paris.
There you go, you never know.
So, you know, it's just.
Life's a journey.
Milford teachers have always amazed me, cause they certainly aren't doing it for the money.
Right, right.
You know, there's positions that are a lot less stressful, that compensate much, at a much higher rate. Um, it hit me the time that we ran through budget crisis, two thousand and three, when Romney cut our. Two thousand and three, when Romney cut our budget. And we had to deal with it. And I was amazed that the union for the teachers of Milford. Came to the FinCom. And said, we're, we're willing to make you an offer. We'll forego our raise. This year, if you make sure that money that you're saving stays in the school system. I didn't even know how to, I mean, this was the union. You know, all the other towns around us were delaying their raises. Which made no sense to me, cause if I can't afford to pay my mortgage today, how am I gonna afford at the end of the year to pay double? But there was the teachers saying, we'll give up our raises to save the quality of education. Just struck me as.
Well, we might be asked the town to do that soon, right? The state isn't really giving us any extra money this, this year from what I understand.
Well, we don't know yet. Um, the last, not last year, but the three years before that. The state put in a new program that targeted communities that had high special needs. High um, English second language and high low income. Well, Milford rang the bell on all three. So we got an incremental seven million dollars a year, which made life a lot easier. So for three straight years, we got that normal chapter seventy, which is what the state says. We need to pay for forty seven percent of our schools' kids.
And over that time, was the, was the town itself having the, the town stayed exactly where it was?
Town went up a little bit.
Yeah, but not comparatively.
But not compared to what the state did. I mean, seven million dollars a year is a lot.
Yes, of course.
Um, the first time I think the town's gonna face that decision is whatever we decide on the new high school. Uh, I can't imagine that we're gonna get away with not using profanity. And I, I consider two and a half override and debt exclusion the most profane words in the dictionary. But no, um, over the years, it goes up and down. Like when we have to put in ten, twelve million dollars of Milford money for the school. We're gonna be increasing our contribution significantly. But the last few years, we've been so lucky, but we've been adding two hundred kids. I mean, that's like a memorial school every year for three years.
It's a lot. It's a lot. And we're gonna be asking for a lot, you know, and this is the moments where you've gotta. You're gonna have to really see, put your money where your mouth is, literally.
And that's why I feel comfortable. The decades I've been presenting and working with town meeting. I've never seen them let down our kids. Cause it's their kids too. It's like we, we treat them as if they're a separate entity, but they've got grandkids, kids every, in the system. Have you had a chance to look at the MCAS scores before they faded away?
No, why? What, what's going on?
The question that always came out. Was why does Milford's MCAS scores always lower than the towns around us?
And I think I had mentioned this earlier. We have, we have students who have to pass that MCAS and they are brand new and they. They don't know the language. It's just, it just is what it is. Um, again, they are here. And, and for, unfortunately, it affected, affects the overall score, but. I don't think it's a indication of us doing poorly.
Lexi hit Stacy. And the principal Tommy Daverin, I've never seen somebody so dedicated to kids. That was his grade. Those were his kids. And I walked in and I knew I'm poking a hornet's nest when I said, Tommy, why do your MCAS scores suck?
Just as blunt as that?
And he looked at me the same candidness and he goes, cause you're ignorant. I said, great, educate me. He said, Al, we have a bimodal distribution. When you average them together, they're below some of the towns around us. But let me take the first Gaussian curve. Which are kids who grew up in this country, who know the language cold. I'll put those kids up against any town around. And you know, it dawned on me that. If I put you in a situation that said, okay, Derek, you got two years to take a competency class in Mandarin.
I won't be able to spell my name.
No matter how smart you are, no matter how hard you work. That language is gonna be there as an issue. But again. I've lived through walking out of my house, never having spoken English. When I was a kid, coming home saying, mom, what are they doing? These kids don't speak Portuguese. What's wrong with them? And very quickly, I assimilated. You know, so when people tell me that. These English as a second language kids are holding everything back. I kinda take it personally, saying, I don't think so. You know, and I get criticized for saying, the kids that come to Milford, if they bleed Milford red, they're our kids.
Absolutely, one thousand percent.
We're coming to the end of the show. Any words you wanna leave with residents?
I'll just say that when I ran three years ago, my whole campaign was based on, I'm a dad. First and foremost, I'm just a dad. I don't have all the information yet and I'm, but I'm willing to do the work. And I'm willing to represent this co- this community as best as possible. I want to uh, ensure that our kids. Have all the opportunities and I'm gonna fight for them and that has not changed. I'm still just a dad. That's literally, that's it. No, I, I don't wanna s- I'm not saying this because I'm, I, I. Putting on anybody else, but nobody was running for this, for the seat. And like we said at the start of the show. I, I can't, I cannot let it, I can't let it go. I gotta do it. I gotta do it. I gotta put my name in the hat and if the, the town like, yeah, I'm not, I might not be going against anybody, but. Theoretically, there could be a writing campaign against me and I could lose. And if that's what the challenge, challenge chooses, that's fine, right? But I'm putting my name out there, saying that I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to do it.
Well, again, as I started off, I admire people like you who not only have an opinion, but are willing to do the work. To make it better. Even more, I admire people who try the first time. And you did well for a first time, you know, um, candidate. That's impressive.
Thank you. I think it's scarier now, the second time. Cause after doing the first time, like, wow, that was a lot.
Well, I mean, if you think about it, you need your vote and your wife's and you're in. If you can't get those two, you're in trouble. But thank you for putting your name in the hat and starting on a journey to help our kids. And as always, get to know your school candidates. To me, that's the most important position in town government. Everybody thinks of the select board, the highway, cemetery, parks department. But these are the people. Derek's gonna be a person that. Anybody's gone through a high school child will remember that you fought to get an hour or two at night. An hour or two, ten minutes before they ran to sports and activities. These people on the school committee dictate six to eight hours a day of your child's life. Get to know them and if you have questions, call them. They are one of the um, unique boards in town. The finance committee and the school committee, the only non-compensated boards that we have. So people aren't doing it for the money. They're doing it for the kids and I applaud every one of them. And as always, to our six loyal viewers. May God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight. Good night all. Thanks for joining us.